All right, it's 6:30. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, 6:30. Ms. Beal confirming audio and video?
Yes.
All right, both are working, huh?
Yes, hopefully. We have no one to check with, but should be working.
We'll now call the meeting to order. For the record, we have Commissioner Smith, Wild, and Brown present, with Shepherd being absent. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. This commission makes final decisions on conditional use permits, variances, and appeals, and makes recommendations to the city council for subdivisions, rezones, annexations, and code or comprehensive plan amendments. As a matter of order, the format for the public hearing will follow the process, where the presentation by the applicant, presentation of the city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, discussion of hearing among the commissioners, and then the decisions. If there's anybody here from the public who wishes to give testimony, please note that there are signup sheets at the front, so please fill those out. No person shall be permitted to speak at the public hearing until the person is recognized by the chair to do so. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you may ask them during your turn for public testimony, and the applicant can respond to them during the rebuttal, or the commission can ask the question of staff during their discussion. Again, signup sheets for the application. If you wish to give public testimony, no person shall be permitted to testify at the public hearing unless recognized to do so. And if such person has signed their full name and written their residential address on the signup sheets, clearly state your name and address into the microphone at the podium. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, none by staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items of business which may not require separate discussion. From time to time, we may move an item to the consent agenda. At this time, I see two items that could potentially move to the consent agenda. Those items being new business, this is the public hearing action item A, ANN 2025-0001, the annexation request on behalf of this Garden City Police Department, as well as item B, CUP FY2025-0014, Eric Hagan Architecture's requesting conditional use for industry flex at 4115. So on the item A, the de-annexation request, is the applicant present?
Chairman, I am here. Staff, Jennifer Warrenborough, representing the city on this matter.
All right, thank you. And are you good with moving this to the consent agenda? Or would you like to discuss the item?
I am okay, both representing the city as the applicant and as the staff reviewing the code and moving this to the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the public who would like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none. Is there any reason the commissioners would like to discuss this item as opposed to moving it to consent?
No.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just note for the record that we did receive some updated documents that I believe are now part of the record that would be considered.
Yep, thank you very much. You'll add those to the record. Thank you very much. So if there's no other discussion on that, we can consider moving that to the consent. Moving on to item B, CUP FY2025-0014, this is the CUP. Eric Hagan Architecture is the applicant present.
Yes.
And then have you reviewed the conditions and also the decision document that was provided by staff?
Yes.
And are you, is there any objection and any discussion that you would like to have on that item? Okay, so you're acceptable to the conditions.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any reason from staff on why this item should not be moved to the consent item?
Chairman, then no issues noted by staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, fellow commissioners. Any reason why you would like to discuss this and not move this to consent?
No.
No.
All right. Entertain a motion to move both of those items to consent. On the consent agenda, we do have item A, which is the approval of the minutes from the October 15th, 2005. And then if there is a motion to move those other items, and we can add that to the consent agenda. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
I move approval of the consent agenda consisting, which now will consist of the minutes of the October 15th meeting, and under new business, item number A, a de-annexation request on behalf of Garden City Police Department, and related, what's connected in there and everything that's in that, and and to include the updated documents that were provided and added to the record. And item number B, CUP FY2025, number 14.
Thank you very much. And just, I didn't ask if there's anybody here from the public to testify on the CUP. So just to make sure that we don't have anybody here saying none. Okay, thank you. I have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. Any further deliberation on this item? Hearing none, we'll put it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye as to A and B, but I have to recuse from the minutes because it wasn't here.
Okay, thank you very much. Any knows? No, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. You're set. We will now move into the old business, item five. This will be a public hearing. And for this one, it will follow the outline that we discussed earlier. So again, for the format of the public hearing, we'll have a brief introduction. There'll be a presentation by the applicant, city staff report. We'll have the public hearing. There'll be rebuttal testimony from the applicant, close the public hearing, discussion among the commissioners, and then decision. So under old business, we have S U B FY2024-0006, Edgemere subdivision, combined preliminary plat, final plat processed as a planned unit development. Jaden Schneider is requesting a nine residential lot subdivision with one common lot. The property is currently located at 219 East 44th Street in the R3 zoning district. All right, do we have the applicant present? Thank you, sir. Again, if you had approached the podium and then state your name and address for the record, please. And the floor is yours.
Good evening, Jaden Schneider, 3770 North Jackie Lane Boise. I just want to say again, thanks for the opportunity to present on this topic. We've been over at one time as the fact that it's old business and just appreciate the staff going through it and allowing us to try to make this site plan as best it can be. So thank you for your time again this evening to talk about it. Again, this is Edgemere subdivision. It's a proposal for a nine townhome, 10-lot subdivision, nine of them being buildable lots, one of them being a common driveway or a private drive. That's one of the discussion items that we had this evening. The developer has discussed some options that they feel tries to meet the things and the items that commission had discussed previously. Just kind of want to get into those specific items, and we can touch on old items again as well. But I'll start with the new items that we updated and the things that we've done to try to meet those requirements and try to come up with a great site plan. Specifically, first item right here is we've added three guest parking stalls to this site. Originally, these guest parking stalls that were being proposed were just within the driveways, and there was a variance request specifically for having guest parking within individual driveways. There was some concerns on if that was adequate or not. So the idea with this is there are now three full-size dedicated guest parking stalls provided. These dimensions meet code for a full car length or for a full size there. So the idea now is that there are three dedicated full-time parking stalls as well as the driveway stalls, which would then in turn as well provide an additional guest parking stall for the site. So each of the units has a two-car garage, or at least very close to what a full-length two-car garage would be. Now, that's a tandem garage, not side-by-side. There would be a guest parking stall that would meet the reduced width, or compact parking stall, I think is the nomenclature, out front of each individual unit. So there's nine there. And then there's three dedicated guest parking stalls as well, and those can be signed to say guest parking stalls. For instance, lots of times you'll see things that suggest 48-hour parking maximum for this type of stuff, so that people don't use and abuse that type of guest parking stalls. We haven't got into the weeds on that, but if that's something that commission would feel makes sense in this scenario, that's an easy one to give in that scenario. The next thing that the developer has done is they've reduced the building width for lot number five. So on the project, or on the townhome portion, that's the five attached units. The townhome width on the very end used to be larger. In order to add those parking stalls, they've reduced down that width of the building. Here's an exhibit that shows what it used to be, which is on the right. That was the original building footprint. That was a two-car garage with side-by-side parking. Now they've taken it down from that 20-foot width down to a 15-foot width. So on the left side of the screen is the updated building footprint, which they've taken five feet from the building and added it so that they can add in the additional parking stalls and still meet those parking dimensions. And with that reduced building width, it's now added, I want to be careful how I say it, updated open space. Technically, in this scenario with the parking, the open space area has been reduced from the previously proposed open space. So I don't want to try to say, hey, this is open space that's bigger and better. However, we do feel that with the reduced 15 feet, or reduced down to 15 feet on that building, it's provided open space that is more usable. And I think that this was hopefully trying to meet what commission is asking for, which was, hey, how do we make this open space at the end of this turnaround more usable? So what we've gone from was a smaller open space area that was kind of wrapped up and around the hammerhead turnaround, and a smaller area in between lots five and lot six, to now a larger, more traditional open space that in our idea meets the dimensional standards for open space. Now, I do want to touch on that again, because Hannah has mentioned it in her report, and I'm sure she can mention it again. The setback variance that is being requested for this open space is due to the fact that the dimensional standard for the depth, I'll call it, I'll say 50 feet wide and 28 feet deep, that stretches into the 10-foot setback from the property line. So along this southern, well, it's not technically southern, but in this orientation, the southern property line, there's a 10-foot building setback in that area, which in code specifically states that it can't be used within the open space. So what we're requesting here is, in this configuration, we would like to request that that 10-foot of open space or 10-foot of setback area be considered within the usable open space, because we feel in this configuration it does. So there's a number of the variances and whatnot that we've added to the list or updated and how we want to word them, just to try to meet all of these conditions. Just to go off the ones that I can remember off the top of my head right now, it is the parking for guest parking with the three-car parking situation in this. It does not need, I think it's five minimum full-size parking stalls would meet code in this scenario. We're proposing the three full-size, and then again, all of the nine other compact parking stalls within the driveway. The next one is the open space area. We are proposing that this open space area meets the intent of the code. However, as I mentioned, and as we can get into, there is that issue with the fact that it's taking area that's within a setback, which we feel in this scenario makes sense. However, I understand the commission has to approve something like that in order for variance. The question about a private drive versus a common drive, or is it a private road versus a common road? In the report that we put back, we went through two options, and we kind of laid out what we thought would either make sense with option A or option B, with is it a private lane? And is that a variance, or is it a common drive with more than four lots taking access onto it? So those are a few things that we talked about right there. And then just as a quick idea of what the original layout looked like versus the updated layout, you can see on the bottom view here, you have the larger lot for lot five with the two-car garage side-by-side. That's now been swapped out with a smaller unit, which added more space for guest parking and for landscaping areas. So we're trying to meet as best we can the code, trying to add in parking area, trying to add in usable open space area for all of this. And it just kind of comes back on the developer here to try to make a site that works both with meeting the intent of code and also trying to make an economic decision on, hey, does this site work with less units? It came down to the fact that with eight units as opposed to the nine units, it was basically a wash on if it made sense to do the project or not. So what they're trying to do here tonight is come up with something that makes sense and tries to meet the intent of the code, as well as still retain the ninth unit, which is, for lack of a better term, the moneymaker for this project. So I have more slides that kind of show the original layout and more stuff that we've seen previously, but this is the intent of what the update to the site plan looks like. And I'd be happy to go through it more if anybody would like me to, but I think that we've discussed it once, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild.
If you're and maybe it's in here somewhere, and I just didn't see it, if you didn't have that 10-foot setback, how, what percentage short are you on open space? Does that question make sense?
Yeah.
How far off are you, I guess, if you didn't have that 10-foot?
It's 50 feet by 18 feet on that one, and I think that the open spaces were basically right at it with 1,400 square feet. So I don't know off the top of my head what that would work out to there, but 10 by 50 on that one is 500 feet, so maybe we're 1,000, yeah, 900 feet on that portion then.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you for that briefing and what we're doing. I do have some questions. Are you, are the developers still planning on not having a homeowner association?
No, the plan is to have a homeowners association.
So that has been changed. So you're committed?
I think the plan was always to be, if there was. If it was written otherwise, our apologies on that. But the plan, yes, is to have a homeowners association. I may have mismarked it on the plans if it came up, but the plan is to have a HOA.
For some reason, I was under the impression that that was not the plan, but that answers one of the questions. Now, if I understand it, the only full-size parking places that are going to be available will be the three lots that you put out by reducing the size of the one unit. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All of the rest are going to be for compact vehicles. Is that correct?
The guest parking in the, on the driveway, yes. And then the garages themselves are, I think it was 18 inches too short over the two stalls in order to be considered full two-car tandem.
Approximately two feet short. Is that correct?
Something, yes, yes.
What? Will there be anything in the CCNRs that would restrain people from buying this that have full-size vehicles?
I don't know. I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that there would be. Is there a suggestion of something along those lines? It does hamstring it a bit.
As was pointed out in the previous testimony, the largest selling vehicle in the United States is a Ford F-150. Is that correct?
Yes.
What are the people that buy these places to do if they show up and they die? And let's assume that they have two cars per unit, and one or two of the cars are full-size vehicles or F-150s.
Well, if I remember correctly, one F-150 and one Ford Explorer, the two top-selling cars in America. Well, I think the ARAF 4 is technically, but the Ford Explorer was the largest of the two, will fit within the interior of the garage. However, yes, if there are two F-150s nose-to-nose, they would not fit within the garage. And I don't think I have an answer for you that would be, hey, they can chop off the back of their tailgate or something like that. So I don't think if someone bought it and they had two full-size F-150s that they would fit. And I don't have a good answer for you that would solve that issue easily.
I have one more question. So the plan is still with regard to garbage, the will be by Unisys, that would be picked up in that parking place that's in the front, each one of the garages, eat for each place. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. As far as the landscaping goes, it looks like there's some confusion or at least some ambiguity in the documents as to whether or not you're meeting the required coverage and landscaping. Can you speak to that a little bit to let us know where you're at with that?
Yeah, so we've had the landscape architect put together what they think is the ideal site plan for this, or ideal landscape plan for this. We're basically trying to put trees and shrubs everywhere that we can. The one comment that was brought up, and Hannah speaks to it in her report, was a street tree. The fact that we have frontage means that we would need to have a street tree. We kind of discussed it last time where the access point doesn't have an area for us to put a street tree on this property. One of the things that we had discussed was adding an additional tree into this open space area that we have shown, that green open space area. You can see it on this plan right now. There's already two trees. I think they're class-two trees, but I could be wrong. Anyways, there's two trees in this area already. If we added a third tree, perhaps that's an area to add a tree to meet the street frontage. And hey, we didn't put it up on the street because we didn't have area we could. However, we added a tree just, in order to add a tree. However, now with this updated open space and this more rectangular area, it gives somebody an area to, you know, walk their dog so they can do their business. This site plan does have a park bench area. It does have a bike rack area. It does have some green space that could be lawn area. That's what's proposed in the landscape plan. So there are areas that are utilized for open space, and someone, like I said, walk your dog and, you know, have their, do their business out in that area. There's just really not a whole lot of other areas that we can add trees and add shrubs to this site plan. On the landscape plan itself, there are a lot of screenings and lots of shrubs, and I think junipers to try to add screening. So the trouble that we run into is basically, you know, we don't really have a lot more space to add more landscaping. I think it comes down to just the open space, and, you know, do we want to add more landscaping to try to get trees in? Or do we want to try to have usable space? The discussion that we had was, can we add more usable space to try to make that something that works for the homeowners in the future?
Understood. And then, so have you reviewed the draft decision document with conditions?
Yes, but it was a week ago or so now, so, or anyway, yeah, so it might be a minute since I've, since I've chat him.
No, that's fine, I guess, and we can get into this with staff's presentation. But so what I'm hearing you say is really what you're looking to ask for some sort of waiver on or else to consider are really just the parking and the open space. Because if I'm understanding the decision document correctly, and Ms. Beal will speak to this, is that you're going to be required to meet the rest of the conditions in this document, which is that you're going to have to adhere to the required landscaping, the street tree, everything else shady, you know, visibility for your HVAC units and all that. And I'm not seeing or hearing any other waivers. So I'm assuming that you're okay with everything else except just the parking and the open space.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, okay. Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Ms. Beal.
Good afternoon, chairman and commissioners. I will leave the screen sharing right now just for reference. And thank you, Jaden, for doing such a thorough job describing all of the changes. My staff report goes into a pretty deep dive of those, the analysis of those changes, in which I'm not going to repeat word for word. So if you guys have questions, we can certainly dive into those. I think it will be necessary, especially regarding the waivers around the common open space in the parking. But overall, staff's position on the application is that while the proposed Edgemere subdivision does demonstrate alignment with certain elements of the comprehensive plan, such as that infill development at 17 dwelling units per acre, it does not comply with several key code provisions of the Garden City Development Code. Notable areas of that noncompliance do include the parking design and dimensions, the overall development landscaping, including the interior 5% landscaping, as well as the perimeter landscaping for the subdivision, the configuration and usability of that common open space and how it meets the intent of code, the placement of and the screening of the mechanical equipment there on those front, front setback areas of the units. And while these issues represent not only the numerical deviations from code, but it also results in a design and livability concern that will affect the quality and functionality of the overall development. Although the applicant has requested some code adjustments, or waivers, as we're calling them, tonight, through that planned unit development, which is completely allowed, the number or the cumulative number and scope of those deviations raises concerns about whether the proposal meets the intent of the planned unit development ordinance. The PUD tool is encouraged to, or is intended to encourage innovative, high-quality design for a public benefit. And it's not meant to serve primarily as that mechanism to obtain relief from fundamental development standards. In this case, the number of requested adjustments appears to stem from a site design that exceeds the physical and functional capacity of the property, leading to a cascading cascading noncompliance with code. As a result, the proposal does not demonstrate how the code adjustment requests meaningfully advance the objectives as outlined in Garden City Code. So unless the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the requested code adjustments are justified and that the project meaningfully advances the objective of the comprehensive plan in the planned unit development findings, staff has to recommend denial of the application in its current form. Alternatively, the commission can also recommend changes be made to the application similar to what was requested in September, as opposed to moving it on with a recommendation of denial or approval, if you find it appropriate. The drafted conditions of approval. There's a few highlighted yellow and a few highlighted green portions. The green are showing what would need to be in the drafted conditions if those waivers are allowed, and if you agree with the waivers. So in going into the conversation about the waivers, just based off of my code analysis of the application, there's five waivers. The first one, or rather, it's the last one, item E on the decision document, is the one that we see the most common. It doesn't really cause any points of concern at this point in time. It's the more than four units accessed off of a common drive. Based off of previous conversations in September's Um, based off of previous conversations and that September's, um, planning and zoning hearing, I have further interpreted the common driver, private roadway to be a common drive as opposed to a private street. Um, so I've changed all the language within the staff report and decision document to be that of a common drive. Therefore, there's that waiver in there, which you see very often. Um, the first waiver, um, other than that common drive one, item A is the waiver to common open space dimensional standards. This waiver allows for alternative configurations as opposed to what code spells out. Um, this would allow for that is a 15 by 28 common open space, uh, rectangle as shown on the screen. Um, this isn't necessarily a cause for concern. It, it could be considered a, a typical waiver request just because it, it is clearly demonstrating that this common open space is there. It is usable. It's intended to be active and passive in nature. Um, however, it is deficient in square footage of common open space required. So in calculating that, that square footage, it's about 1,400 square feet. Um, whereas the site, let me find it. The site is required to have 10% of the gross site area dedicated to common open space and that would equal 2,265 square feet. Um, so, and I think Jaden said it's about 900 square feet deficient. Um, so that, that is waiver request number one. Um, waiver request number two is parking dimensional adjustments allowing for slightly undersized tandem garages in compact parking spaces located within the driveways. Um, so the tandem garage spaces are about two feet short of what code requires. Um, the, the spaces to be, and then every driveway space is also a short, short of that standard 10 by 20 size. Um, it's larger than the compact parking space dimensions of what code outlines. Um, but it's not quite meeting the 10 by 20 space. The site overall, when a lot, when considering that you have to, or you can provide up to 30% of the parking spaces as compact, uh, they're meeting all of the number requirements. It's just essentially all of them are shorter in dimensionals and dimensions than what is allowed. And whereas the, the three parking spaces in the hammerhead, um, are the, the standard size. So that's waiver request two. Um, waiver request three is the perimeter landscaping dimensional standards. It would allow for a reduced buffer width and alternative screening configurations along the common drive. So the only place that is required to have perimeter landscaping is the common drive adjacent to, um, the other residential parcel there on 44th Street. And so I'm using my mouse where the perimeter landscaping is required to be per code. This is only about two feet wide. Um, this might be. And code requires a 10-foot wide perimeter landscape buffer, which is six feet high and six feet wide at maturity. Um, obviously with only two feet of landscape opportunity, you're not likely going to get a six-foot wide screening. And if you do, then it would, um, encroach into that pedestrian pathway, which is also required per code to link the, what will become a public sidewalk eventually to the front doors of each entry. And then the fourth code waiver is the street tree placement. Um, our landscape code requires that they have at least one street tree. There is not a lot of room for that street tree. Uh, the entire frontage along 44th Street is going to be consumed by that ingress egress apron and the pedestrian pathway. Um, so in the drafted conditions of approval, I have recommended that that street tree get moved internal to, to the development as opposed to being on the street because it simply cannot go there. But technically it's not code compliant and so a waiver is required in that regard. Um, a waiver was not requested for the landscape or the 5% landscaping. So the overall landscaping requirement. Um, I could not find the details of how much landscaping is provided in this development. Um, I have concerns with the amount that is proposed or can be placed because the 5% cannot include setback or perimeter landscaping. And so that essentially, in just looking at the plans, boils it down to the common open space area. And so the, the applicant has not requested a waiver for that. I have drafted a condition of approval to require that. Um, but I am concerned about the ability to provide that without any kind of rearrangement or additions to that common open space at this point in time. And the site is required to provide 1,133 square feet. So we, we might get there with that common open space. I just, I don't know. Cause it can't include the, the pedestrian pathway and the landscaping and the setbacks. I think that is it. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Veal. Appreciate it. Any questions for Ms. Veal?
I don't have many questions.
I have a couple. Just so I understand it correctly, the new parking that's in the hammerhead, are those correct in terms of dimensions for a standard size?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, those are the correct size. Let me code compliance.
And then in the decision document, we have, so you, you mentioned it and just wanted to make sure that I'm following. So if we were to approve the document, just as is without looking at the green, it would be anything that's in yellow would be meetings code requirements. So regardless of what the plan showed today, they would still have to provide plans that would show that they're meeting the code.
Correct.
And then some of the green would be for consideration if we are considering a waiver or a deviation of some sort. So for example, the street tree, moving that, that could be included, um, with that section that is highlighted in green.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is how I tried to outline it.
Okay. And if you were looking at the perimeter landscaping, for example, we could modify potentially in the area in the drive if we so chose that the re- remainder of the site would still be required to meet the perimeter landscaping requirements except for the drive?
Uh, yes, you, you could word it that way. Um, and I'm, I'm looking at it right now. So item F, 4F on page 23 regarding perimeter landscaping is requiring that perimeter landscaping along the common drive to meet code standards.
Okay.
However, that can be altered because we have those. Um, on page 28, we have the, the waiver requests, code adjustment requests. Um, and item three C talks about perimeter landscaping, allowing for a reduced buffer. So if you do allow for that waiver, then you would have to, um, edit item 4F regarding the, the perimeter landscaping.
Okay. And then with the calculation that you provided us, that 1,400 square feet of open space, that's including the setback. So if we're, which pursuant to code wouldn't be included in the calculation for open space, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Common open space can include setback.
Can?
It can.
Okay. So then, so then that's how you get to the 1,400 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, and sorry if that, that's confusing. It oftentimes does get confused. The common open space can include setbacks, but the landscaping cannot. And so if we're using that rectangle to count towards both landscaping and common open space, there has to be some, some different calculations going on.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't have any other questions for you. Thank you very much for putting this together. Any other questions for Ms. Veal?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now open this up to the public. Is there anybody from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, uh, is there anybody that has signed up?
Uh, Chairman, it appears that there are no sign-in sheets in the basket.
All right. Thank you. So at this point, we will go ahead and turn it back over to the applicant. Thank you, sir.
Hey again, Jaden Schneider, uh, 3770 North Jackylane Boise. Uh, I don't really have a lot to add. Uh, happy to answer any more questions. I, you know, I, I think the big one is we're, we're trying to make something happen in a site that's a difficult site. Uh, we understand that we're, we're trying to ask for a lot in this situation. However, I do think that we are asking for things that, uh, in some ways meet the intent of the code or at least try to meet the intent of the code, uh, in regard to things like parking, uh, open space area landscaping for what it truly is just a tough site. Um, that being said, you know, with, with the parking and with design review, we have been, uh, able to, to mold this site to try to meet what design review has been asking. And we're trying to work hard here for planning and zoning as well. So we appreciate the time and we appreciate the thoughts and, and as much, uh, of the, of the critiques as we've gotten, we do appreciate it because we do think that we are trying to come up with something that does work on a difficult site. So thanks for staff's time. Thanks to Hannah and thank you to everyone here for this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions or try to as best I can.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
I have no more questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. At this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. This matter now comes before the commission. We are a recommending body for this matter. So we can open up for discussion. Anybody have any comments that would like to? Go first. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Uh, I appreciate, uh, the changes that the applicants have made. However, my opinion is, has not changed. Uh, I agree with the staff. I still think that we're trying to, but too much, too many units on a space that's not large enough. Um, and so, uh, I guess the first thing I'll do, I'll tell the thing that I don't have a problem with and granting waivers on. I don't have a problem with tiling the ditch. Uh, I think that, that, that has no prob- I have no problem with deviating from our standard requirement of putting a sidewalk and, uh, complying with what the highway district recommended. Uh, it's just too small out there to do that. I have no problem with becarrying it a common drive or a private drive. This is designated as a driveway and, uh, accommodating the more than four units taking by doing that. So that brings us to where it's deficient. And, uh, and when you go down there, the first, first waiver, I agree with the staff. I, I don't see how we can say what's being done there is adequate user, use a useful common space. What we're being asked to do, uh, in fact, I, I should go back and, and say overall what we're asking for too many adjustments to the basic code. And just by saying, well, we're processing this as a PUC, it's, it's a stretch too far. So that gets me back to this. So, uh, I don't think that what's being provided, in fact, in many ways, as was pointed out by trying to make up a little better on the parking, we've amplified and made it more difficult with regard to having a space that is usable, uh, that could be considered to be common usable space. Uh, the landscaping plan, uh, number two is, is the parking. And as I already pointed out, I'm skeptical about, because the, what we're really saying is that the only parking that would be acceptable and would meet the criteria uh, is the, are the three guest parking places. Uh, uh, otherwise, if you get people, as, as was admitted, if you get people that have anything other than two compact cars, it's just going to make, uh, they're going to be in the way. Uh, they're going to be parking in, in front of the garages. And it certainly, and with the back end of the F-150 or whatever you want to put on there, that's all, that's going to be sticking out into the supposed driveway, which is for fire access and everything, because it just makes the minimum the way it is. If it went without anything being parked there. Um, not to mention it. So what, the parking is just inadequate. It doesn't have enough space for the people that are living there for what they will be doing. Alone for anybody that wants to be visiting them. The landscaping is inadequate, both in what is required, would normally would be required for the perimeter landscaping and also, as was pointed out, for what is interior. And it's not, it's not just the one tree. Yeah, they, you could perhaps find a place to put the one tree, but you literally are very deficient. And I, I agree with Ms. Veal on that with regard to that. And overall, what we're saying, what we're trying, we asked to do is we're trying to put too much on this piece of property. And I agree, it's, it's a small piece of property in which we're trying to put too much on it. And I appreciate that probably because the economics, the economics are not there for this size of a parcel. And in that regard, I'm, I might as well put in, I'm not in favor of, of continuing this either. Uh, this originally was submitted last September. We have already been spending more than a year on this. The collectively with us and the design, the design consultants, when they looked at it, this was originally submitted. And by the way, at that time, it asked for 10 units, 10 residential units plus a common lot. So that has been reduced by one, but it's just not enough. I, and it looks to me like this whole thing would have to be redone and rethink about the kind of development you're going to put on this parcel. And that's my opinion. I'm sorry. I, I appreciate the effort that they've gone through for that. And I very much appreciate the effort that staff has done to try it. Go on with this, but that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Brown, uh, with regard to many of the things he said. Uh, I rarely disagree with Commissioner Brown over the years. Uh, I rarely disagree with staff. And, um, despite the fact that I think a lot of what Commissioner Brown said is accurate, uh, I would, I, I, I'm on the other side of it. I, um, I made the motion to move this to this date certain, uh, for changes to be made. And I think enough change has been made. Uh, it's not a great project, let's be honest. Uh, but when we're debating the size of an F-150 versus a RAV4, uh, as one of the reasons that maybe they can't get two cars in the tandem garage. Um, that's not, you know, we're really splitting hairs here a little bit. I know that's our job to split hairs, uh, but, uh, I, I would find the waivers sufficient in this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild. Commissioner Smith.
It's difficult. I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Brown. I think that Hannah said this exactly correct. I wrote down a quote that it exceeds the functional and physical capacity which creates cascading noncompliance. I think that really sums up the issues. I really appreciate the applicant's efforts and transparency, and I especially appreciate the tone and tenor of the presentation. I really do. I I want, I really liked you, and I wanted to like this project. But I agree, it's just too tight. And my concerns come from less of a aesthetic perspective and more of a safety perspective. I think the purpose of not allowing a common driveway to serve more than four dwellings without an exception, the purpose of that is safety so that things don't get jammed up. And so if we make an exception to that, and then also make an exception to all these parking issues, I think we're creating a jammed up situation where exactly what Commissioner Brown described is going to happen is going to happen when people's vehicles are sticking out into that fairly narrow drive there. And I think it creates safety issues. I think it creates visibility and emergency vehicle issues. And I just don't think that it fits. I also don't think that it fits the purpose of the P U D, as Hannah said, innovative, high quality design. I don't find this particularly innovative. I think while I completely understand where the developers coming from, that you have to have a certain number of units to make this profitable. I I fully understand that, but I just can't in good conscience recommend approving.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. This one for me was difficult. Because I understand complexities of trying to fit this type of development into such a small space. And I think one of the aspects of this that probably bothers me more than anything is when we get a developer who looks to adhere to the code and does what they can to make it work and isn't asking for so much. And this just feels like there's so many waivers that are being requested. And I think over the past, maybe even last applicant, when we've seen it, and they just, even though they're sacrificing certain things, they are adhering to code. And they're doing what they can to do so. And and this really does feel like they're squeezing every bit out of it, which I understand the usability and the cost on a square foot basis and trying to maximize the site. It just seems like it really is to the absolute max. I mean, from my perspective, there are certain things that I could overlook. Common drive, tiling the ditch, the sidewalk. Maybe not even so concerned with the parking just because you have two parking spaces that are going to be in. So really, you're talking about how many people are going to come visit. But I do understand the fellow commissioners' concerns that if the three parking spaces are occupied, then what's going to happen if you have deliveries, if you have trash? It could get pretty squeezed, I guess. And really, how are you going to maneuver around the site if you have cars sticking out? So I completely understand that. One of the reasons why I did ask the question on the landscaping is that if there was a motion, perhaps there could be some way to bridge the gap on the landscaping where we do enforce code and leave it to them to try and figure it out on the landscaping and the open space. Where if they need to make modifications to design before it's approved, then they can do so as long as it adheres to code. I would be open to continuance. I know that there's Commissioner Brown acknowledged the fact that this has been out there for a long time, but it seems like there could be maybe one less effort to try and get there. I don't know whether the applicant wants to do that or not, but I mean, seems like a lot of this could be resolved if they did remove or reconfigure at least one of the the units to get to a little bit more open space and wider building. So and I'm not a designer, but I'm just thinking that maybe there's something there. So I do agree with staff and also Commissioner Smith that this just seems to be asking for too much and doesn't align with the intent of the P U D as a mechanism to sidestep code compliance. So I would probably be more on the side of Commissioners Brown and Smith with on that. Any further comments or discussion on the matter?
I'll just add that I'm probably also with Commissioner Brown on continuing it. I feel like we've already heard from the applicant that they simply can't lower the density and have it be profitable. So you're talking about a completely different project to to get the space that we would look for for any of those improvements because whether we're concerned about open space or concerned about parking, I mean, I'd say it take, they probably have to take away one, maybe even two, and completely redesign it to get there. And I just don't see that that happening. And I think we've come up with project enough. So I would say that we're done, in my opinion.
Any other discussions in the commission?
I I don't think so. I think I I think I'm going to stick by by what I said. And I will say I very much agree with what the last thing that Commissioner Smith said and with regard to what could be done in one week. I, in looking at the size of that and thinking about what we're talking about, I'm not so sure that some of what we're talking about could be taken by just taking one unit out, like as you suggested. I think it's going to take a redesign of what you're going to do with this parcel. Unless there was some way that they could acquire some more adjacent land to make make it work. And you can see right from the way that is, that would be very difficult without taking out some of the buildings that are adjacent to it. Hey, for example, just take that, take on it as where it's going on to the road, which is is very substandard and wouldn't meet any kind of a criteria for a road. That's one of the reasons why we're talking about a drive instead of doing like that. It's only twenty feet wide, and that includes a sidewalk that's going to be integral to it. And you can see how close it is to that other property or of the other house that's there already. Plus, you can, you can see how tight we're making these just compared to the size of that, which I'm sure I can hear how big that house is. But I suspect it's not that great a big of a house. We're talking about really trying to put a lot of the units on a small piece of property. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with what I said.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? All right. Entertained a motion if there is one.
I'll give a shot. I recommend that we recommend to the city council that they deny this application for subdivision F Y twenty twenty-four number six, Edgemere subdivision for combined preliminary plat and final plat process as a planned unit development.
And a motion, Commissioner Brown, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Smith. Any further deliberation on this matter?
Yes, I I do think we we need, I need to provide some additional comment. One of the things that the city council will be required to do if they go along with our recommendation is to explain what the applicant might do to make it so it was acceptable. And in that vein, I would offer that we also have some kind of an obligation to include in the record our thoughts on what it might be. And since I'm the making of the motion, then my thoughts on that was in order for me to recommend approval, if I was going to do that, it would take a drastically modification of the current plan, essentially requiring a reduction, a drastic reduction in the number of lots so as to allow for sufficient landscaping of perimeter and interior to meet the criteria for acceptable parking that area and to make the common use, making the common use area usable.
All right, you're looking to have those comments added to the record for city council. Thank you. So we have a motion. We have a second. We had some deliberation or additional comments.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wild.
I'll just note, again, I I referenced, I think I made the motion to bring this back here to give the applicant the opportunity to make some changes. Just reviewing the record, we did ask for additional time for the applicant to submit revised plans that would address the identified deficiencies and bring the project into alignment with Garden City Code. I think what you're all saying is that presentation has fallen short of addressing the identified deficiencies. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I agree. Any further discussion or deliberation? We can put it to vote. So we have a motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Smith. So all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
No.
With the record show, three ayes, one no. Thank you. All right, that will conclude the new business, the public hearing. Move on to any further discussion of the commission tonight. Another discussion, and we will call the meeting adjourned.